This is for the regular council meeting for April the 10th of the city of Ellsworth, Kansas. To the flesh. Especially to the flyer of the I R S case of the Florida into who to model with, which has one issue. On her God, he can dissolve with liberty, he does sprawl. First item in our agenda is the consent agenda. We need to approve the March twenty seventh city council minutes, claim ordinance. A zero one zero three two three and the airport meeting dinner and updates. That's agenda item report dash twenty three dash one twenty five. Again, I appreciate that you had it. The rules in there about discussion and only moments sometimes in the future. We don't just prove them as being correct, so that's what all. Mr. Mayor, I think that the consent agenda consisting of the broker, the. Um, March twenty seventh city council meeting minutes. The claim ordinance day zero one zero three two three and airport advisory minutes and updates.
All seven.
Councilor Strishfield has made a motion to approve the consent agenda. Uh, that includes approval of the March twenty seventh city council meeting minutes. Claiming ordinance A zero one dash zero three two three. And airport meeting minutes and updates, uh, that is the gen item report dash twenty three dash one twenty five and counselor. Um, Hanson decided with that.
Yeah.
All right, here you go, in favor, say aye, aye. Oppose. All right, motion carries. All right, next item on our agenda, petitions delegations for all citizen comments. Please take your full name and whether you. Are an eligible city residents, all citizen comments are limited in five minutes. Per se, unless city council has further questions, would anybody like to approach the podium and have five minutes? Come on, sir.
Hi. My name is Roger Janis, I'm a Ellsworth resident, I live at very far west third. During Ellsworth. I have concerns about a fifth wheel camper that's in my neighbor's backyard, it's. Untagged, unregistered. It's a haven for drug and criminal activity that's been going on for quite a while. I've talked with, uh, Dylan Bedrock over several months about it and, uh. In thought they were gonna be able to do something, but he said now there's no. Enforcement code number for it, they won't do anything. I'm just very concerned about all the activity and the concern for my, my kids also.
Can you stand that? He did present it to my attention and I am working on it. We, they have found a couple of examples that I will work with our attorney to build an ordinance for the council.
All right, thank you, sir.
I thought that was one about if there's no hookups, you can't. Have a camper. Angela here?
No, I didn't.
I looked at the code. Last.
Just remember why she told me when. So when Brad had COVID, he lived in my parents' camper in our yard. Okay, because that's not the time we had to do it, so we know. And she said that really. She thought as far as the ordinance, that unless there's hookups, actual hookups, you can't, you can't live.
Know that they're. She's probably proved that they're living there.
Right, right.
So it comes down to proving that.
Right.
When it comes to court, right? But there's some other ordinances that maybe could have applied, but there was some missing language or some language that we didn't think covered it. And, I mean, you don't want to start something and you just go, oh, just have somebody.
No, 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 yeah, no, 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 I just remember Angela told me that I lived in two percent, that's why I'm just. Not questioning you.
No, that's fair, we did do our research on it, Darcy, and I will get something to update the code to cover this situation. Will this code also include non-cambers like airport hangars and things like that, or? That's if the board wants us to include it, uh, just please let me not make an opportunity to do something like that, because I think there's some other temporary housing. You know, the might have a raw.
Right. Well, I mean, it comes to moderate housing. The, the problem is always gonna be something like that, proving that someone lives there, just because you see someone going and down it.
Right.
You know, that's the burden of proof that you have to be.
Right.
On that, but I think we're talking more along the lines of. Tagging, maybe party type situation for a camper in general. I have to be wrong, but that's what we were discussing last week.
Can it's for sure to look at others, you know. Mudd, saying, who knows, you know. Thank you, appreciate it, sir, for your time.
Yeah, just thank you for bringing it to our attention. All right, do you have such a board? Yeah, my finished business, so we got the discussion of the approval of ordinance thirty one thirty four, uh, passing a water. Passing water rates, uh, general by report dash twenty three dash one fifteen, I'll let. Um, Dustin explained this and kind of bring it back up to what we're doing, so.
So last year, as you, as most of you knew, I talked to most of you on Friday, um. This was kind of left hanging, it's, uh, it's an order that you had a water study, well, the city did a water study under Rusty. And, um, there was also a corresponding ordinance with it. And, uh, based on what the staff has reported to me, I guess council told Rusty to bring it back and it never happened. Luckily, if I'm wrong, this is all hearsay at this point. Um, but I didn't want, since you paid money to have this rate study done, um, I at least wanted to get it before you, uh. And, uh, it is my understanding that this rate study was used to help offset the cost. Of the replacement of the meters, even though the ARPA funds covered about four hundred and fifty thousand of it, there's about six hundred thousand that was left. Outstanding and, and they, this rate study was supposed to cover some of those expenses in the process. And so I just wanted to bring it before council today to close loose ends and see if that's still something you want to do. Um, it's up to you, but there is that six hundred thousand that did come out of the water budget. For the replacements of meters.
And if I remember. And along with that, if I remember correctly, we had built in. Our building to do future projects. With the water source system and we're way behind on replacements and upgrades to that system, so we had built into that. Rate study had them look at what we needed to do to raise funds for future projects.
Well, if that's the case, and this is the ordinance that they drafted along with it, all I did was just, uh, give it her to. Update the numbers and make sure the dates matched up with. This month as opposed to last year.
Yeah, and I did a little research, um, today and tried to go on our district. Um, website and look at, uh, user rates across the state and averages are. Basically what I found out is their data is way out of date, so it's not reliable, um. But I looked at some other cities, right? The one, one close to us is kind of similar in size with Russell. Um, as we have this rate change, we are still way cheaper than they are at their January, they updated theirs in January. So we're still at five thousand gallons. About sixteen dollars less than they are, so substantially. I think that's more than. So we're looking at, go ahead and try to do this.
We, so we never did the. No, we did the water study and then just stall. Four months, they never got back up. I think, uh, cyber attack slash this slash, you know.
My husband, he loves it.
Unless we can slash, that was only slashes.
That always gets confusing, we did have another. Um, depth increase on the sewer race. But corresponded about time frame, so, yeah, it gets confusing about. Which ones mentioned moves on the data.
So what are, which one is the rates, where are they in the earth?
Between two thousand and five hundred, five thousand nine hundred ninety nine gallons, it's gonna increase by eight dollars and seventy cents.
A month?
Um, per, uh. For one thousand gallons of usage.
That's final over time.
I understand what, uh, this was one, I think this was all one.
Thing, yeah, this does not have any periodic increases, it's just based on this, uh. I know some water rate increases include a periodic increase, but I did not see one in this particular ordinance. This is a one-time increase. Based on the study.
I didn't think it was either.
If you want, I can give you the, uh, water study.
Yeah, I just didn't think it was eight dollars, about what they told our.
The differential brings it up to eight dollars.
What is it now, Hal?
So we have a base rate for the first two thousand gallons of water and like a typical residential house has a three quarter inch meter, um. And so I know exactly what the base rate is, like eighteen dollars and some cents, I think, for the first two thousand, but every thousand gallons after that is ten dollars and thirty three cents. So I guess I don't really understand how to read this necessarily, to see what it would be as opposed to ten dollars and thirty three cents. I don't know what that increase is.
So first thousand, you said every thousand.
Yeah, so it's like eighteen something, don't quote me on that.
And it's like, after every thousand, after two thousand is ten dollars?
And thirty three cents, yeah, so every thousand gallons.
I think I remember that now, that our major user doesn't pay over the two thousand gallons. Typically.
So, yeah, so like my family uses like. Uh-huh, so like we pay the base rate of two thousand, we pay an extra like twenty seven dollars. So, yeah, our water bill is like typically eighty nine dollars. The minimum bill is like sixty eight, twenty fours, something like that, total with water, super trash. All that, so, yeah, so, but as far as water goes, yeah, so I don't know, like, based off of this, I don't know what exactly the. Rate will be for each extra thousand gallons or like how it'll change the base rate. I don't know, I don't understand.
So we promise against the air location, yeah, but we're interested, it's kind of hip, what's the other? And I need to get you some more information than you need.
I think it'd be better to be like expressed as if going from ten dollars and thirty three cents for a thousand to. Yeah, then still, yeah.
The next meeting.
It, we're paying now and then the rate is.
Yeah.
I just wanted to get it.
Yeah, thank you, I do it, yeah. Thank you, um, next item on our agenda is the Kirk Michael updates. John, would you like to provide us with an update?
Sure, we can do that.
Can you turn us over?
Uh, after you would, pull that button, there you go.
If you, thanks for having us, stable. Uh, just got a couple of quick things to update on, um, the neighborhood multi-use path. Which is the concrete path that goes to go on the Smokey River Bridge, Smokey Hill River Bridge, south of Good Sand. Uh, final players are submitting to K I O, they're currently advertising this project for bids. Uh, bids will be received until like the nineteenth by shade op and then. When opened, it posts it on the website either the next day. Yes, that's a, that's a week from Wednesday, we came up with the open bids on that project, so I had to see what we get. Now, when I checked last week, it was currently six claim holders. We've guessed by the. The type of contractor, some of those may be looking at just the box forward to constructional mode, or others be looking at the path themselves. And we'll see how much this come in. Well, usually within thirty days or less of that, K I O would be sending the, the city. A letter with the bids and asking for the city to accept the bid and telling you what your, it's just been a local share of B. As you should expect some correspondence from K I O. Probably in the early, this part of May. Allow the cost share project to approve multiple sidewalks around town. Still haven't gotten a solid word yet from the contractors when that project may start. We had noticed that the global foundation data is set for early August. So it's gotta be, get it sooner than later, they're gonna run out of time. Before they go into legislative damages. They're working on other projects at this time, it's just hardly yet to get here quite yet. The C clip project to resurface, uh, A fourteen with other savages in Ellsworth. We're working on the final plan of specs, kind of nearly ready to submit to K I O for the review. And they said they would need up to thirty days for the review, as soon as that is done, we'd be able to advertise a bid that project. Uh, so whether it's June or July, most likely bid dates. Along sanitary sewer projects, that we had to design. The extension of sanitary sewer from the city system, we're rolling those electric. As my understanding, the, the city is currently advertising that project to bid it out for contractors. And then we are still working on, uh, the final design for sewer extension to the, the house on eleven street, the fourteen oh one eleven street. Once we get that final plan completed, we'll submit it for K D T permit application. Now, the turn lanes of the one forty intersection. Any other questions?
I was just curious if that's the one that we were having to speak, yes, it's time.
Yes, it is, sorry.
Sorry, I've been interrupting you.
That's right. Uh, the final update I have is on the A one fifty six, A one forty turn lane project. Um, I believe the late start date on that project is the end of April, I've not heard definitive start from the contractors, if they're gonna make that start date or not, this. Well, certainly anticipated to be this. We've completed this summer sometime. So there's a lot of ways we're waiting on some things, certain projects. So that's my report for this evening, if you have any questions. I don't, I think so, it's taken a lot of. Information on the path project, we'll come in the letter from K I O, our address been shared is. Dustin, I want to look and see what we've budgeted for that, once, let me have all that information, that's what matters.
Thanks, Sam, I was understanding the funding and K I O portion may be more impactful than what I. Thought I, whatever.
That's good, that's what I've gathered as well, is that in the past. They, there was eighty percent, they got to a certain maximum is. There, I believe just because of the fluctuating, fluctuating, the increasing cost. Of contractor bids, K I O had your new the cap that says that they would fund eighty percent of whatever the bid is. So, like I said, well, we'll find out, I'm sure we'll get to that, yeah. Uh, but that's, that's what we've, that's what we've been informed from K I O. Yeah, of course, we get advisory from three investments only one, the cost is what bid is, low, low, low bid is, so. We'll be watching with keen interest here next week, just seeing if that is a good. Are you excited? Anything else, John?
Thank you, John, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, new business, uh, we have the fire leadership election confirmation, so. Uh, this is the state in January, we need to confirm any fire chief, and we, we missed the, we missed that date, so we're, we're gonna do it now. Uh, so we're all, you want to start board here, um, I think. Is there additional swearing yet, or is it?
Um, interpretation, Melissa, I just see, you know, I see it as confirmations.
I think it's, yes, receiving information and current information.
And it states that he, that he will let you know that he was elected the assistant fire chief, the second assistant chief, the secretary of the treasurer, and the secretary of treasurer could be the same person.
All right, so we're gonna try to lose ends and I get, uh, that's my call, but even though I'm supposed to do that, so we're sitting here. So what I had that I'll give Callie here is just simply, uh, uh, recording of our, uh, annual, or monthly meeting in December, or by all mistake, that our elections are done. In the monthly meeting in December, and then those officers take over in January, so this is from, uh, the, the regular monthly meeting in December fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty two. And the section on elections simply say this is recorded in our minutes. Uh, Luke Sykes, who was, is, uh, was at that time one of the members that has done this, conducted the annual officer election. Said Tim Corby made the motion to remain the same officers for the next year, Tim Hayes seconded the motion and after a vote, present membership. Motion carried, those chiefs are after Bravo versus assistants Dale Houston, second assistant Kirk Robson, secretary Ken Graves, and treasurer David Rankin. So I can give this to Callie so she can have a copy of that. Baby cheese.
All right, thank you. We can just have a vote, and that's it, pretty much. I'd do that part, I'm not sure.
It's not very clear, it says you're supposed to receive the information in, in party. That's the, so.
Callie confirms it.
Yeah, I confirm it.
Okay. Next, Jan. Does that work?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so a request. For the approval or resolution declaring the water watch due to drought conditions. Agenda item report dash twenty three dash one sixteen. Uh, you want to explain this, Dustin?
Sure, Joe, if you can come and help me with your side of it, so as you all are aware, Wayne. Uh, sent me a message. Um, a couple of weekends ago, because it has been drought conditions for a while. And he just simply inquired, had me inquire with Joe about where water levels are at, and then Joe inquired with the state, so I'll have you take it from here to. The, our wells are not in horrible shape right now, you know, the last year we spent is about two hundred thousand dollar, three thirty, no, all that stuff. However, once this river drops below thirty C F M. Uh, and next, actually next one was considered to be next one, which required to be. Thirty five C F M, or currently at thirty. It's not very well, but you know, allegedly, well, the data they have, they're gonna put us in restrictions, that restriction basically takes out two of our wells. For instance, today, we've, our, our well is rated, our, our plant is rated at a hundred, one million gallons per day. Which, technical, technically, do I, if you can hear anything, well, it's a, we build a plant to, to run one M T D, but consistently, all the time. It probably isn't gonna be that hard, so in that case, seven hundred M T D is about what you're gonna get. For today, so anyway, I. Thank Dustin, everybody, it's kind of, I've never been through one of these water washes or a water advisory. Uh, if we need to get this label worked out of the way, just in case it happens, it becomes something that we definitely have. You know, there's some considerations otherwise on that, uh, splash pads, swimming pool, golf course. This beautiful bed of grass, we started with a soccer team, need to be deleted for the year. Uh, I, when, let's not make it, all the information on swimming pool, how many gallons of water you used last year. The flying pads use seventy eight thousand gallons of water last year. Basically covers four households per month. Well, I didn't realize it used that, I went down there. After work before the meeting, for the meeting reason. Three hundred twelve thousand gallon of water, so I put it in. So it's, it decided to be started.
Yeah, um. I said, unless it just takes on raining northwest. It's gonna be a little river. Fresh flow, like what you said, it, it takes off, raises the age today, we're not, we're a long ways from healthy, sure. So. So kind of my driving force in this was, um, I didn't realize we were there enclosed, so it's, it's good timing, um, that we go through this stuff now, none of us have ever been through it. Uh, so, now we really want to get the word out to public. At this time of year, when we're setting up gardens, they're planting their yard work, I don't want to see somebody go in and plan to do turf and then let's say. Oh, by the way, you can water that half as much as you're supposed to. Um, and I already know one person who's done that, unfortunately, but, uh. Try this, what can you think about that, that, you know, of course, there's just as good a case that we're gonna be flooded out too, so. Um, it's weather, but I think all the signs are pointing at it's gonna be dry, and. Of course, next month, it's gonna change, so. Be for the safest. Gonna be some great, great focus, just let them know that we are considering producing. Don't start watering it on now, because if you have to make it, we're gonna shake off, we're wasting enough water for it.
So legally, sorry, Joe. Legally speaking, there's three levels to the way I read this, Melissa, correct my understanding at any point. Uh, the first one is the declaration of the water, water watch. And, uh, it basically institutes voluntary conservation measures. And any, either the board or the mayor, depending on how you're gonna handle it, can, upon the declaration of this board's water watch, then. Either the board or the mayor, and if you want to, me, um. I can, uh, pick four different areas. That, um, that you can, uh, restrict, or you can set parameters, or the mayor can set parameters on. One is a sprinkler, sprinkling of water on lawns, shrubs or trees, including golf courses. Although our golf course uses, uh, wastewater, so, um, we're good there. Um, the second one is washing of automobiles, however, uh, when I talk to each one individually, and you all pretty much said that. The commercial car wash can stay open, uh, but the, uh, but the private ones, no. And then, of course, the third one is the use of water in swimming pools, fountains, and evaporative air conditioning systems. And then, of course, the fourth one, which is the open-ended one, waste of water, however you interpret that as open-ended. It, yeah, it's up to the board, so.
So some questions, Joe, down the road, is there a point where the state takes it out of our hands?
Yes.
So, so ultimately, we're starting empty there.
We're often waterlogged, eventually. If, if in, in May, if you don't get to that thirty five C F M, or one point eight feet. However, they measure that, they will start issues with others. Okay, we'll, we'll see for.
Any andale or registered lighter, we'll pick it up.
Right, but what, what about the fire department, how much should they need, looks at his vibe to be affected by those guys?
Doesn't at all. There is some warning in that water watch that if there is a fire, you're not supposed to use your water. Close your toilet, don't turn the faucet on. I didn't realize that till here, is there a, a lot of that, I think, actually has to do with, if there is a fire and rouse, what's on to it? One of our big lines, and he gives locals C S time, while we put the vacuum on it. You know, when you're tossing any candidates that could be there are now committed to the line. That's right, it all, all, I think. Remember that's just gonna be, I, I guess. How far do we go with enforcement of that, uh, this forum that I drove around and. A guy on the hunkle that had two sprinklers, we'll try down the street. Though, why we talking on the door, I think, well, I think when I fix them, there's. If that's something we need, you guys want to continue to do? I can't stand, like, I'm on work, I can't stand it getting wasted, when I see it running down the street, it is driving me crazy. We're building a title people, if you do put that in there, we're either have to enforce it or not. That's what makes a race.
Yeah, everybody look at the enforcement, I mean, it's, it's pretty serious if we get into it, it's fines, it's. Raised and raised, it's, it's pretty serious, so we try to get away from that as much as we can.
Exactly, that's what we're, because that's, if he did it, this guy didn't know his sprinkler, we're out in the yard, and he's knocking on the door, he's like, oh, oh. He, he, he's right there, he's right there, he's here. So this point, it's just falls here. Maybe, I think, like I said, it's the label for us, that you're gonna be old, we're gonna have to. Make sure we're covering our faces and. Make people aware that it is possible, you said, no, uh, no more, a trouble, I saw it.
And it's a proactive approach to managing your water supply too, I mean, if we take this proactive approach now, even if we get our, the river completely full. It still sets a good precedent moving forward, you know.
We've done this before, I mean, there've been summers where it was. Yeah, I remember we could water on this day and even remember on this day and. It's not like it's not happened before, so.
It's been a while.
Yeah, it's been a while, but, yeah, we've done it before. Yeah, it's been a while, but yeah, we've done it before.
So I guess the part now is um, these different levels, right? I would say, in my opinion, the council needs to decide on what kind of levels, because as we move forward, we say council decides now. It doesn't become more serious than council decides later. It just seems like that's the way to approach it. Not that I can't make a decision or Dustin can't, it just seems like it better. As we go forward, you know, the council makes those decisions, so those different levels. They sound, for this voluntary, it's sounding, they sound fine.
Cemetery is just a water.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, down the road, I think it's the council that needs to decide. You know, how how do we, how do we take care of the golf course, commercial, car wash thing, I think that's where it needs to be, the council. Does everybody agree on that, or are they happy with that, or do you want to?
Good.
Yeah, cause we we talked, we talked about that, I think. That's it, I mean, I think, I think there's much else to it.
You wouldn't want to pass that resolution, assuming that you're on board with the what's the bottom, I guess, the W is getting used, watch, more, watch, press your watch.
Watch is the first little voluntary restriction.
Now, the board or the mayor declares what those voluntary restrictions are for. What are we, I think we're past this resolution, declaring a water watch.
What resolution number?
Twenty-three dash one sixteen. It's right, this list right here.
That's just the agenda either, I should say, I think, no, that's I think that would be a hundred and sixteen margins is so far in twenty-three, so.
We only passed, if my memory serves me right, we only passed one of the resolution, and the name, number, convention I use is twenty-three zero zero. So the red margins, no, this year. This is, this is a resolution, I mean, twenty-three dash zero zero, if you like. It isn't.
Sorry.
Yes.
So we just need, so that we're that we do share uh yeah, declaration of a water lodge. Effective tomorrow. I mean, yeah, that's what you guys think.
Well, it's in the resolution, they have it filled out as templates to know.
Oh, you got, that's mine, but just whether the twenty-three dash thirteen or two.
Yes, yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so to approve the resolution declaring a water watch and water watch, effective, effective immediately, immediately, yeah.
Then, let it be stated voluntary, yeah.
If voluntary is embedded in that.
Yeah, and the word watch is that voluntary, like, yeah, if you're a water watch, so don't be there, voluntary water watch, just a water watch.
All right, yes, council has has basically made a motion to approve the resolution zero dash zero two. Um declaring the voluntary water watch. Uh set to take it back immediately, Council of Springfield has seconded that motion, hearing now, is on favor, say aye. Close? All right, motion carries, let's assign that into into space as a, as a resolution by, we'll get that started.
And then does that even go in the paper?
Yeah, yeah.
But it'll happen, they won't let me put it in, so we could have a check for interim. Cause you can do this on state, so tomorrow, we're there too, the other water watch, it's three.
Hey, that's how I mean, just Bruce Ford is just to purchase the lot in fourteen oh six Fairbanks, so wants to purchase a lot in fourteen oh six Fairbanks, it's a piece of city property that is agenda item report dash twenty-three dash one twenty-one.
Um, mayor, I was approached by, uh, he originally approached Wayne, and then Wayne passed him to me, and then he submitted to the council. Uh this conference, he built out on his own. Um and fourteen oh six Fairbanks is an empty lot right now, the city hits with an abandoned well, and um we have been maintaining it. Uh and uh honestly, uh we, the other I think his offer is fair, however, I did want to include the assessor's value, just so you see a contrast, the assessor, the assessor values the property at twenty-seven hundred.
And we do have words on Zoom, so.
When I talk to our staff about how they feel about this process going away, they're extremely happy. And I did talk to the owner, the Flint River, uh we did talk to the owner behind Bruce Ford. Uh making sure that they didn't want any part of the property, and she said no.
This director, chief, office director, administration, executing sale of the lot at fourteen here and six Fairbanks, approved it, or and they invoice for the amount of two thousand dollar.
Well, sir. Council of Springfield has made a motion to allow Bruce Ford to purchase the lot, fourteen oh six Fairbanks for a total of two thousand dollars in the city. Uh Council of Narrows has seconded that motion, any discussion, any debate, any concerns? Hearing now, was it favor say aye?
Aye.
Close? All right, motion carries, we're gonna allow that sample to go through, thank you, Bruce, appreciate it. This time the agenda is the operational agreement with the Midway District Kansas State Extension Office, uh that's agenda item report twenty-three dash one two two, well, right?
Well, uh, this is to that project that uh Cunkle and St. Clair, I I think it's coming up on a year or two, I just couldn't figure it out myself to get that cleaned up, it was kind of a jungle mess and last summer, I just pretty well just kept it sprayed and uh cleared weeds and I kept the sedums in there, you know, at least so we had something kind of to look at, but kind of was one, uh, kind of came move forward and try to get us you know, some more uh plants and that in there this summer, but of course, could be a challenge if we get into water frustrations. The goal is to kind of put more native, native plants and flowers in there that are more drought hard. Uh kind of provide some medication and also make it look, look good, you know, educate on, you know, you can have nice flowers and that, using natives that don't require husband's water, but when you're establishing, they still need native water, and definitely you want to keep them warm to look good when they do flower, so same course, the main cost of it is is the plants, uh I've been working with, uh emailing back and forth with the director of the Dyke Garden Freedom, I've invested, they sell plants that you can buy native. Uh and of course, his husband, given the house, the size of it, he was he would figure about two plants or one plant for every two square feet, and it's kind of roughly about two hundred square foot in that area. So that'd be two hundred plants and and his estimate of five dollars a a plant, that'd be a thousand bucks and I don't know if I'm willing to go that high to the start, but maybe cut that in hand. So about a hundred rooms, and of course can always adjust down or as needed. The goal was to try to also have more volunteers to help with this project, and we, you know, I tried to get some uh the master garden program going, I I got one, I completed it, so I will have at least one first. With it throughout the summer and your interest in looking, I got Scott's email, uh kind of a list of the plans I'm looking at, getting uh they're all, I made sure they keep, keep, or what's the word, Coniston, yeah, Coniston, of the height of my installed amount of structure. Um any vehicle traffic, there, so I think I'm, pretty well place under three to four feet tall, and at max, and um the tallest the plants will be.
It looks good so far.
Thank you for dealing with it, for sure.
And, yeah, last week I kind of sprayed it again and kind of cleaned it up a little bit, but and, you know, you can prove it, and we get plans to probably look at, I'd go down there, think on the afternoon of Sunday the twenty-third and hopefully start getting some planning, that that next week, your twenty-fourth. On I said, I need the key to access the water right up there to keep everything water and do we want to find, though, if it's gonna make a little water, we're gonna and to that saying, so that's the, it's since we're trying that's this, five hundred bucks. They're gonna, you know, the water challenge.
Aren't you purchasing drought resistant plants, correct?
Yes, but still, we gotta get them going, you gotta get them established, that's a that's a you know, on natives, they need, they need water.
Is a possible table, this is like next month, well, we still inside of whether this hit with some storms and so.
The operational agreement is separate from purchasing the stuff, this is, the operational agreement is just to establish um an agreement between the extension office and us. Um if you want me to not purchase plants, he can still do his regular maintenance and training and manage the gardening program. Whether without, uh, which is separate from this agreement.
The Dyke Garden only has their sale on the twenty-first through the twenty-fourth. So if we get past that date getting plants is gonna be more challenging. I mean, I could do the same thing as last year, you keep the seeds. They're just like, so they're made for um getting watered and all, and there's that, we're still.
So in light of the water watch, maybe we'll have to 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 uh put off purchasing plants, but I think in terms of the operational agreement, I am a big fan of writing our uh agreements with the, our partners down. And it would allow, it would give him the authority, the city sponsorship to do some more master gardens that he can use just with the plants already there.
Mr. Mayor, note, approve the operational agreement between Midway, Kansas State Extension Office and the City of Waltham.
Second.
Council Johnson has made a motion to approve the operational agreement with the Midway District Kansas State Extension Office with the city of Ellerworth, Councilor Hanson has seconded that motion. Any discussion, debate, any concerns?
Sir Mayor, I'm going to have to say.
Okay, because our council goes from this. Any other discussion, concerns? All right, hearing now, was on favor, say aye?
Aye.
opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you, Craig, appreciate it, one other, sure.
On the plant still, I'm excited, tell Scott to uh the Dyke Garden, the hold on, I mean what we need or that, but actually, we just, you want me to visit with Dustin or yeah, it'd be good.
We took G R O, yeah, sounds good. All right, thank you, Craig. Haven't gotten about trees yet, we got seven of them, so. All right, moving on to department heads, recreation, we've got a report there to read, golf course, we've got a report, Joe, do you have any to stream? We don't have street or, um, Joe, do you have anything you want to add? That's okay, um. Chief, do you have anything you want to add for your reports?
Uh, I think, um, uh, just you got the run report that was there. Um, and I guess the other thing is, I think you guys, we had a pretty big party the other day, I called in seven departments. I I showed up and I had called, uh requested that if you are aware of the K W C S News, or twelve is here and emergency management took care of that for me, because I said I'm a little bit busy. But uh we, I did actually call in nine departments, but that was that day, it was estimated to go to about fifty. Um fortunately, there was a road there, and we had plenty of equipment on, and we actually got on it very quickly and uh there was no loss of any property, just grass, so. Other than that, unless somebody has any questions, morning.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Police, it's not present treasurer, newly inspector, so moving on to city attorney. So Dustin listed, it's getting to that time of year. If you two did have a conversation about you know, that it's the time we appoint, appointments are coming up, so probably start having what do you want to do, what do you want to do, and kind of present us, this is, because if you don't get, it's April tenth, if you don't get started, then you're gonna be pressed against the wall, so.
Okay.
All right, so finish the conversation, all right, um, city clerk?
Um, I don't think there really got anything, I was gonna say that, um, and you may have said this already, but we all participated in CPR first aid, all that stuff, training on March thirty first. So I don't know if you guys all got that memo or not, but we all did that, I had a scout, and we had a luncheon after that, and it all went really well, and I think everybody's really happy to get it, so. Um, that's really all I had.
Do you have anything else, Callie?
All right, Dustin. Um, I think I talked to most of you about my stuff on Friday. Um, we talked about the CPR class. We've talked about most of the stuff that I have, um, a couple of personal items, if you have a rumor mill already, my wife is looking at producing pages. Um, we're, she is working with Stacy, I just, I talked to Melissa about it, I'm worried about my legal standing. Um, in terms of income, I want to make sure I, the the the, I just wanted to let the public know that my wife, one, this is showing that we are both interested in investing in the community, we love it here, and we want to show you that, and uh my wife didn't have any interest in investing in Waltham Borough, so, um, it's kind of, if if she's on board, that kind of separates me as well, um. But uh, but number two, um I just want to make it clear that I've set the expectation with her and with me that my first job's here. Uh I might help her out with little things, but uh this is gonna be largely her baby, because it reminded her of my obligations here, so I just wanted to make sure that the public we haven't done anything yet, we've just been talking, um, we've got to get a loan first and do a bunch of paperwork establishing an L S E for her and all that, so uh it's in the early stages, but we are in the deep end of it. And if, yeah, I just wanted to let you know.
I did forget one thing, I don't know if you guys got the memo, but Mandy did resign. I don't know if my name or before you resign, um, her last official day is the thirteenth, but she's gonna stay on and help us with deposits and things like that, and so we fill her position, so we are out for hire again for that provision, so, how's that, she and the boy, and where? Then, wearing thirteenth, I think, was her first day, that's
So like a two month?
Two month, you know, but, um, she has a big chance to pursue, so um but she is willing to stay on for time right now, until we fill her position, so. That way, I, I forgot to mention that, so. Moving on, sorry.
No, that's fair, that's really fine. Uh, other than that, I don't think I have anything, uh, what I've already reported at the council.
You're good, all right, thank you. Uh, Tyler, sleeping?
No, I don't.
Good, all right, Wayne, get with it.
Um, I don't, I think I had this, um so, it is coming up on time, but for doing reviews and whatnot, um Stan and I talked about, um Dustin, and Dustin was always asking for direction, and wants direction from us. So then I thought it'd be a good idea, you know, we as a group would sit down and come up with some, here's what success looks like for testing. Um, so that we can, you know, make that part of his growth in his job and with us, and I, that's a really good idea, so.
Is that gonna be part of a meeting, or are we gonna have a special meeting, or does that have to be a session?
I think a lot of thinking on your own, but. I think a lot of thinking on your own, but we'll have to do it. Probably in the executive session.
I think that's what we're talking about. All right, Eric?
No.
Sure, your desk, girl. Larson?
Well, I just had a question about the bus parked by my son, my son's husband obstructing the corner. Sorry. I worry with the high school being kids up on the street and I drove it one day and it it is very much obstructing that intersection.
Sure, yeah.
And I just didn't know what the. What legally police, you know, what it looks like to have a bus parked, I mean, I can't. Have, you know, cameras and things parked in the street, so what is the difference?
If you could purchase. Wrong, which I don't know if they know it's was happening properly, just start from the beginning is what I'm saying.
Uh, we originally, uh. When I tasked open and Mr. Bishop on that, it was, uh. I don't think it was currently registered and I don't think it was insured. I don't know that, so I don't want to quote, put my name on that, but that. I do know that when we approached it, he did get it running, he did get it plated and he did, and we know it's currently insured. And what he does is he moves it every seventy-two hours to work around. And um. Uh, that's where it stands. We are working with him on the other stuff as well. And I, if you would like me to look at other ordinances to.
No, I was. I just break the high school kids and. There are kids that walk at a passing intersections and. I just don't want to see somebody getting hit by a car because. It's certain view or they don't think about a car coming in. Also, people on church. I mean, I go to a manual, like, there's. Frail, but it's not frail. But older adults that go there that makes their reaction times aren't quite as quick as maybe a child would be, right?
I'll take a second.
What do you mean he moves it every seventy-two hours?
So I will have to look up the ordinance while I'm here, but the ordinance, I think, allows for uh, the any vehicles longer than seventy-two hours, they have to move it.
Oh, like you can move it to a different street. I can move it from standard to nine seventy-two, okay?
Yeah, it's kind of a relearning process, so we probably need to think about, okay. What's the next step, you know, so. And this is in process, this is a process, it's going to take time. And like I told Dustin, I said, you know, we've got to be committed as long as it takes, takes two years, this is what we're committed to. And uh, we're going to have tough cases, and there will be one, there will be others, but but this is, you know, I give nothing, don't a lot of credit for. Get started on tunnels first and we'll deal with the rest later, so this is going to be tough, so.
And I think this goes back to. Always when the ordinance, updating ordinance, zoning ordinance came before us a while back and. Oh, this changes and it kind of died in community, I think, um. But that was part of one of the things that I wanted to incorporate in there is limiting the size of vehicles that can park on our streets. Um, whether it's a driving camper, whether it's a big mobile home, um.
It's a digital bus.
Right, so. But we have to carefully, because anything happens inside of a right way. Is controlled by bigger laws than the city of Ellsworth, so we want to make sure we don't have to do something where we have to post delivery entrance to the city. Here's the list of things, apply an oath with it, you're not used to applying.
Doesn't he have a driveway? He parked in this record?
Or or not, yeah, park it in front of the house in the driveway.
Got you.
I think that is, it's part of your speech, way around the ordinance.
And just to go over chapter ten, uh, chapter ten eighteen twenty is public nuisance vehicles. It says. A vehicle is declared to be in public nuisance when it, this is where your your uh, your point comes in, it obstructs the safe movement. Of traffic or can create an emergency situation, damage to property or personal vehicle is likely to occur. If the vehicle is not removed, it's a public nuisance vehicle, you public police officer or. Other authorized city employee may cause such vehicle to be removed and impounded. In pursuant to this chapter, it also says, when an overt motor vehicle, bicycle is left legally parked on public property. But is not a public nuisance vehicle, which is why that gray area is. Um, but is not a public nuisance vehicle, the subject shall not be removed without either A, personally notifying him. Or B, placing on his windshield or in another, he has seventy-two hours. So there's that.
I'm not trying to, I was just honestly curious.
No, I wasn't saying that. I just wanted to make sure that I was I was understanding it correctly.
I just, I drove down that street and it is, it's hard when you're coming from the high school down that way. And if the intersection is blocked.
Historically, what chief has been using is to make sure that that he is a. The obstruction piece could definitely be a point we can use, yeah, but what we've been using is making sure that emergency vehicles can get through and that's been kind of. Um, the the witness test has been using on it.
Goodbye, head.
All right, I am the next one up, and then we adjourn, so thank you, Wayne, for remembering to have a list here and um. Yeah, I think that's great. I think, um, you know, we kind of, the time that I've been here, I feel like I've kind of been stuck in the mud a little bit and Dustin's kind of pulled us out of the mud now. We're cleaned up, we're kind of towards and stuff, and so part of it is where to move forward to. And giving him that focus, I think, will allow him to think about how he spends his day and what's important to us and what's important to the city. And it's just to help him a lot, and he is constantly asking for that, so I think we need to give it to him and um. Shouldn't be a problem. Um, library board, there are two positions open. I think we're going to put it on Facebook, um, so if you're interested. I think these are positions that have to be appointed next month. Um, so we need to get that out there, get the word out to people. Um, it's a great board, my mom's on it. Um, you know, I don't want it, the mayor is is on the board by Stat Kansas statute, so. Um, it's been a great tool for me to bounce ideas off the public. And get their feedback before I bring it to a public meeting. That's where I do it, so it's. In between the second and the fourth Monday, it's the third Monday of every month is. Um, great group of people, Chuck's was here, he's still here, he's the board president. Um, does a great job. And uh, they they've got a lot of exciting things going on. They just approved. The uh handicap, how they're going to deal with handicap. Really happy with what they're doing. They're going to put the handicapped spaces. They're going to be in the gravel parking lot for now. And um, going to avoid a lot of expense and just kind of buy some time until they can do something more radio, so they they approved that at the last meeting and. Um, going to be some remodeling and so they're 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 on the move, so if you're interested in that position, it's available. Um. Talked about Melissa's, that's coming up in May, the goals. So, you know, I did a little research on this and Dustin and I talked about this, I think. When we, when we fill Manny's position, we need to start thinking about. Dipping our toes in the water if somebody could write grants. And if you think about it, every time we we've had success or we've, you've wanted something, we've told someone, take, write a grant, write a grant, write a grant. So larger cities have these people, so we're not large enough just to have a full-time person. But I think if we could get somebody who has that talent, get them started. And start to prove that we could bring in these grants and get that favor for us. Dustin's work achieved, and he'll tell you, he loves doing that, but it takes an enormous amount of time to do this, so. Um, I think that that's one way that we could bring in revenue, so. When we look to fill that position, Dustin's going to really think about it. And um, that could be a piece that we 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 bump it up to that account clerk too. And then we bring in some of that talent, or somebody that can grow into it. Um. We've leaned heavily on Stacy, that's great, but we're really talking about. You know, turn it on more grants, you know, I think everybody likes that. Um. Then the other thing, one other thing I had was. There's a Chisholm Trail, Ellsworth Spur, um. Kind of commemorative meeting on Saturday. And um, you know, so where's that going to be, Dustin?
Let me pull up the email.
So, um. Anyway, it's it's a big deal. It's one hundred fiftyth anniversary of the Chisholm Trail, so the next six months starting on Saturday, you're going to hear a lot about it.
Say from fifteen.
Eight fifteen.
We will dedicate as a historic marker to commemorate the beginning of the Ellsworth cattle trail path.
Right, so you might see some people else working, that's what it's all about, so. Um, other than that, I just have anything else? I think we're ready to adjourn.
Sir Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn the. I'll sign it.
Council goes, make a motion to adjourn meeting, council hands to second that motion, hearing now, if you favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, you need to adjourn.
Do you have a, do you give me a favor, can you do that in X? And he said he thought he got the issue. Okay, we didn't.